All right, it's 6:02 and let's call this work session to order. I will turn it over to Laura.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have two items on our work session agenda this evening. Really, they are interrelated, so I imagine we'll just sort of weave in and out of both of them as we go through the presentation this evening. So tonight, we have with us Pete Heaven from Spencer Fain, who's the city's land use attorney. We have Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell. The city's bond council and advises on economic development projects. And then Bruce Kimmel with Ellers, who is the city's financial advisor. Here to help kind of run through some basics of tax increment financing, particularly before we start to bring forward and have the council start in on any specific deliberations related to the Mission Bowl project. So with that, I know we, our time is, we have a hard stop at seven o'clock for our legislative meeting. So I will turn it over to Mr. Heaven with Spencer Fain. And I will see if I can't run the PowerPoint presentation appropriately.
Good evening, everyone. And I apologize, I'm having Laura do the PowerPoint because I simply don't know what I'm doing. But I'm sure I'm the only one in the room who said, who could say that. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about TIF, which is by far and away the most powerful incentive tool we have in our tool belt. We're going to talk a little bit about how we set them up, why we set them up, and how we can best use them for our city. And I'm also very happy that Kevin and Bruce are on the line with us tonight as well. Because they'll catch me if I fall. And having done this or worked with TIF for almost 30 years, I can tell you there are a lot more questions than there are answers, but we'll do our best to address each of your questions. So we'll start with the first slide, Laura. How about the next slide?
I may have been the wrong person to do this, so hang on just a second.
I'll do hand puppets while.
Let's do this, my apologies. Emily and I were doing some testing. And I'm going to switch over to the PDF version. So I'm so sorry.
I feel much better.
Yes, well, I don't. I was even practicing this, that's the embarrassing part. Okay. This one will allow me to scroll. There we go.
Great. So we start with the basics, as the slide says. TIF merely takes an increase of the tax paid for a piece of property. Takes the increment, which is the increase over its base value to its improved value. And we can divert those funds to pay eligible costs, both public and private. They can be paid either to, the increment can either be used to pay down bonds or satisfy pay-as-you-go obligations. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Next slide, please. Every city goes through the same process in determining whether or not to use TIF. And generally, we start with, what is our vision for a piece of property in the city? What would we like to see there? And if the market isn't quite right for that use, are we willing to grant an incentive to a developer to come in and build what we believe should be on that property? Our alternative is to wait for the market. And in many cases, we'll just do that. But if we want to sort of jumpstart a project, we offer an incentive like TIF. The downside to TIF, of course, is that you're basically pledging that increment, that increase in taxes for up to 20 years. One side of the argument is, we'd never have it if we didn't have the project. The other argument is, we have the project and why aren't we getting the taxes? So those are some of the considerations we go through determining whether we should even consider TIF. Next slide. It's kind of a misnomer. Many people believe that the entire increment from TIF must be used for a project. That's not true. We can use any number of machinations, iterations of how reimbursements or how bonds are paid. But we don't have to use all the increment if we don't want to. To the extent we don't want to use increment, it goes to the normal taxing authorities as any tax would go. But we can divert up to 100% of our increment minus 20 mils for school finance and 1.5 mils for the state of Kansas, which we cannot divert. We can also divert up to 100% of our share of sales tax, our utility franchise fees, and our transit guest taxes. All of those funds can be diverted to support a project. Excellent. This graphic, I thank Gary Anderson, my dear friend, for, he put this together. And I think it illustrates very clearly how TIF works. If we look at a piece of property that's worth $1,000 and it's paying taxes of $100, you'll see the yellow boxes at the bottom, we call that the base. If we create a TIF district and we improve the property to $1 million, in this example, then our taxes go up to $100,000 from $100. And the graphic on the right shows how those funds flow. We'll always get the $100. We then take off the mill levies for the state and school finance. And in this example, we have $78,400 per year of increment that we can use to support a project. The list of things that you can pay for with TIF is pretty lengthy. I've cut these lists down to the most important elements. But generally speaking, TIF is used for land acquisition, for site work, infrastructure improvements, parking and landscaping. But the TIF statute is very clear, you can't build buildings. And by rule of thumb, I always say you can't build anything vertical with TIF proceeds. You can't pay consultant fees or the developer or development fee. You can't pay property taxes and you can't pay for personal property. And I should add, the city can also use increment to pay for public infrastructure improvements. Peripheral streets, bringing sewer to the property or other utilities. There may be things that we pay for and the developer does not. And we can use TIF as well to reimburse ourselves. There are two ways that you fund a TIF project. The first and most, I guess, most popular is called pay-as-you-go. And what that means is, the developer has to pay the cost first. And then, as the increment is received each year, we reimburse the developer. It's kind of interesting, pay-as-you-go is not in the statutes. And it was in connection with, I think, the Baron BMW TIF, which was done in the late 90s. When we asked the Attorney General if we could use pay-as-you-go as opposed to issuing bonds. And the answer came back yes. And I think now, in the state of Kansas, it's the most popular way of funding TIF projects. The alternative is bond financing. And there are two types of bonds we can use. One are special obligation bonds where we pledge only the increment to pay the bonds. It's a very limited obligation of the city. It does not carry our full faith and credit. And that would be probably the second most popular way of funding a project. And the third, and the one we all shy away from, is general obligation bonds, which do carry the full faith and credit of the city and potentially count against our bonded indebted, or bonded debt limit. Why do we set up a TIF? We got to start, it's actually the three-step process, even though my presentation says it's two. But the first step is to create a district. And that's just a geographic area that you want to have incentives available for. But to create a district, you can't just have the geographic boundaries. You've got to have a reason why you are TIF qualified. And that's either a blight, a conservation area where the majority of structures are 35 years old or older, a pre-1992 enterprise zone, or a predominance of floodplain on the property. There are other qualifiers, but these are the four most commonly used. And once you jump over that threshold, you're establishing a tax-based value that will remain throughout the life of the TIF district. So whatever the taxes are, the day you create the district are going to be the base taxes. That yellow box on the graphic for the life of the district. Then within the district, you can create what we call project areas. And Rock Creek is a great example, where we have a single TIF district, but we have five different project areas to be developed. In connection with the establishment of the TIF district, the county and the school district have the absolute right to veto the creation of a TIF district. And until the last few years, that was never done, but we've seen it more and more from the school districts in recent years. So we get to the point of creating the district and we are not committing to a project. We're merely setting the table for developers to come forward and bring projects to us. When we, when a developer does come forward, the developer has to submit what we call a project plan. That, and it's often misunderstood, the TIF district has no sunset. The project plan does. Project plan can only go for up to 20 years. And the project plan includes the items I have on this slide. And I want to sort of key in on a couple of them. It's primarily just a description of the project. But there have been questions raised about a feasibility study and what that means. The statute, as many statutes are guilty of, doesn't really tell us what a feasibility study is, except that it is to demonstrate that the revenues, the TIF revenues we receive over a 20-year period are sufficient to pay the eligible costs, the TIF costs. The intent behind that is to demonstrate that the TIF will pay off bonds and the bondholders won't have any risk. But again, pay-as-you-go was never a part of the statute. And with a pay-as-you-go, all of the risk is on the developer as opposed to bondholders. So the feasibility study takes a little bit different, shall we say, form. It's often done by the developer as opposed to a third-party consultant on a pay-as-you-go. And it merely states in very simple terms, whatever the revenue is from the TIF will be satisfactory to pay off whatever my costs are. Meaning the developer's taking all the risk. The other thing that the project plan has got to do is determine whether or not bonds will be issued, particularly GO bonds. So there will often be a discussion in the project plan about bonds and whether they're going to be issued. I'd be happy to go back to this slide if you have any questions about those items finished up. So we have determined, or we've established the TIF district. We have the project plan in hand, and now what do we do with it? Project plan has to be delivered to the county commission as well as the district. And then, before we can take the next step, the planning commission has to find that the project plan is consistent with our comprehensive plan. Without that, we have to stop. Once that's done, then we adopt a resolution to set a date for a public hearing. And in that notice, we tell a little bit about the project plan and that it's available for public review, whether or not bonds are going to be issued, and the date the district was established. In order to approve this, it requires a two-thirds majority of the governing body. And I think we do have a project plan now under consideration. And this will be the procedure we go through to determine whether or not we want to accept it. Now, the unspoken third step is what we call a redevelopment agreement. And you'll, you'll hear it called, or the acronym is often a DA, a DDA, and RDA. It's just an agreement between the developer and the city that establishes a 20-year, up to a 20-year relationship. It's our contract with the developer. And in that agreement, we tell, we have the developer agree to performance standards, how the bidding is to be done, how we're going to pay costs, what costs we will pay, and when the project must be completed. And then we have concomitant rights of the city to declare default to.
Is Pete freezing for everybody or just me? Just you. Okay, just checking.
Okay. And also, our ability to recover our public infrastructure and administrative costs. That agreement is probably the most important document we have in the project. And it's in great detail. And as you've seen with the Gateway, for example, the DA is close to 100 pages long. That's where we get down to the detail. And it's for that reason that we have redevelopment agreements, even though they're not required by statute. I wanted to add this slide to just give you sort of a perspective of what we do to create a TIF from start to finish. It takes, at a minimum, 101 days. And oftentimes more, but the minimum we can get by with is about 100 days from the day the developer approaches us to the day we sign the redevelopment or development agreement. So it's a lengthy process. Lots of detail goes into it, lots of resolutions and ordinances, notices. It's a very transparent process. And one we're getting close to being completed with, the Mission Bowl property. Now, I've run through this very, very quickly. I wanted to leave lots of time for questions, comments. Don't comment about the speaker, just comment about the contents.
Pete, I have a question.
Sure.
In the Gateway example, you say the window of time is 20 years. Is that 20 years from what, what event? And is it like, for this, it's been about 15 years for the project so far?
It has been, and that's a very good question. The 20 years starts when we approve the project plan. And as you might recall, on Gateway, we have amended that plan several times. And each time we amend it, we start the clock again.
So I believe currently that we restarted that TIF clock in October of 2017.
I think that's right, yeah.
So what I thought maybe would be helpful, I know that Councilmember Flora has some questions. So why don't we go ahead and do those? If not, I can have Emily actually pull up the TIF project plan that was submitted by the Mission Bowl developer. And then we can kind of walk through some of the mechanics of those various sections. But let's go ahead, I know, Solly, you have it.
Well, I saw Debbie's hand up first and then.
Okay.
I just have a question. How many TIF districts do we currently have in Mission?
Well, we have the Rock Creek TIF district, which basically encompasses the Gateway site and then stretches, follows the Rock Creek channel essentially all the way to Lamar. And as Pete mentioned earlier, that is, we divided that last year into five separate districts within that Rock Creek district. We currently have, there's a TIF district at the Capitol Federal site. There is a TIF district at Mission Crossing, which is Wellstone Chick-fil-A, that development. I believe we have a TIF district, did we get all the way through to establish the TIF district for the senior living? Yes, that was going to, well, the senior living that was going to be on the NEF parcel? Yes?
Yes.
And then, we also have a TIF district that we established on the former JCPenney Call Center site when we were working with that developer at the time. So one of the great, I always like to say, Brian's done a fantastic job. If you go to your budget document, there's a really nice summary of all of the existing TIF districts and sort of the status of the projects within each one of those. So I frequently pull that out and remind myself.
EPC also is a TIF district.
No, an EPC, yes, I'm sorry.
Can I just ask one question in support of that? Of those current projects, how many have we applied GO bonds to?
None.
None.
Good, thank you, good answer.
Yeah, I had a couple of different questions, so happy to run through them all. Or if we want to, if other people have questions, I can ask one and then two around Robin, whatever we prefer, Mayor. My first question was tied to the feasibility study, which you addressed a little bit, Pete. But I just had a question about, you know, do we get to see any details or copy of that feasibility study? And then also, how does that feasibility study connect to the discussions that I think we've had mainly with Bruce before about, you know, the but-for need for this financing, that but-for the financing, the project would not go forward. And so I was wondering what transparency will have on those pieces.
Very good questions. The feasibility study is embedded in the project plan that you see on your screen now. It, because it's a pay-as-you-go, or they're proposing a pay-as-you-go scheme, they don't need a standalone feasibility study. And so we've just, it's just embedded in there. And it's a simple statement that revenues will pay eligible costs. Again, because the developer's taking all the risk, whatever he or she gets is going to be all that there is. So there's no shortfall to worry about on behalf of bondholders. And I think you'll find that, Laura.
Section D.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I guess related to that but-for piece, it seems like the developer has an incentive to have the feasibility study number match pretty closely with what their eligible, eligible costs are, rather than, you know, necessarily getting a fully transparent picture of their projected revenues. And so that was why I was wondering, you know, what additional information will we have to examine that but-for, you know, the TIF, the project wouldn't be able to go forward?
Exactly. Maybe I could jump in a little bit. Solly, I think you're asking some really insightful questions, but we're sort of commingling a few things. So technically speaking, the feasibility study is really just what Pete described. It's looking at the projected TIF revenues and comparing that to what's being proposed and saying, okay, is it likely that the future TIF revenues are going to be sufficient to be what's proposed in terms of either debt service on bonds or pay-as-you-go payments? But there's another kind of feasibility study. And we try to use different terms for it to avoid confusion, but that's what we call the due diligence analysis, the performant analysis, the but-for analysis, right? And we're looking at the development budget for the project. Does it, does it conform with what we see on other comparable projects? Or kind of to the, I think, a point that you might have been alluding to is, is there maybe some fluff in there that makes the project look more expensive than we actually think it will be? Or conversely, you know, sometimes we get project budgets that are too light. And we say, whoa, this doesn't seem viable for the other reason that we don't think you've maybe included all of your costs. And that's a really important red flag as well, right? Because you don't want to partner or to participate in a project that is going to be a setup for failure by being too light on the development budget, just as you don't want to have a development budget that is padded with overly conservative cost estimates to make their need look greater than it actually is. But then, you know, of course, we also look then at the operating side. We look at the projected lease revenues, other operating revenues, the financing assumptions, debt and equity for the project. We look at the proposed impact of, or the prospective impact of the proposed incentives. We look at other operating costs. And that's where we do a lot of sort of iterative sensitivity analysis, getting a handle on how, how does that rate of return look with and without different levels of incentives to try to get to a really nuanced and strong understanding of the need for the assistance? And it's not just the need for assistance to build the bricks and mortar. It's also the need for assistance with different, sometimes different understandings such as affordable housing. And so we could talk more about this later. But one of the things that I've really been focusing on in the analysis so far on the Mission Bowl project is looking at, well, what if we add a certain, you know, percentage of units that are affordable at 60% of AMI, or whatever the case might be? And that has a direct impact on the developer's performa, right? Because it reduces their prospective rents. And that sort of filters through all the way to the rate of return. And I think I described a couple of weeks ago that there's just multiple legs to the stool. And, and it's really this, it's a, it's a form of feasibility analysis, but it's really very distinctly different from the feasibility study that's part of this project plan that's on the screen. Does that help?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And so we would hear all of those pieces at the point that we're ready to discuss the development agreement itself. Is that right then? Okay.
That's right, yep. Yeah, so, you know, we don't get into all of the specific line items of the developer's budget, but I try to share as much information as I can that informs our recommendations to give you confidence that we've looked under every stone and have a reasonably good understanding of how the economics of the project are going to play out.
Yeah. Thanks, I think that answers that one. I don't know if anyone else has questions they want to ask first. I did have a couple more.
Fred?
Thanks. What's stopping a developer in, say, year 18 or 19 from coming back and requesting an extension to that 20-year deadline for potential maintenance upgrades or any kind of refurbishments? Is that common? Or for the most part, is the 20-year deadline final? And then everything reverts back to, to normal after that?
The statute is very specific. It cannot be extended. 20 years is the maximum. And at the end of the 20 years, the taxing authorities get the increment and things go back to normal. So there is no way to extend.
Okay, thanks.
All right, back to Solly.
Yeah, so my other questions related to the conditions required to set the TIF district and that base value. And so I wondered here where the TIF district was set in 2006, but presumably, property values have increased between 2006 and 2020. Why 2006 remains the base when we have amended the district several times? And in fact, are doing so again specifically in connection with this project? And then relatedly, I was curious about when the blight conditions have to exist? If they only have to exist in 2006? Or if they're still supposed to have to exist today for us to move forward with the TIF project plan?
Yeah, those are both very good questions. And you've, you've exposed a couple of holes in the statute. First of all, when the district is created, the tax base is frozen. And it doesn't change after that. In our case, in Rock Creek, for example, we haven't changed the district. We've created the project areas, which didn't affect the district itself. But that 2006 value is going to remain for the life of the TIF district. Many have argued that's not fair. There are TIF districts currently in Johnson County that were done in 1991, where those values are still being held on those properties. And they're yet, they have yet to be, be developed.
Is there anything to stop you from abolishing a TIF district and creating a new one in the exact same space using current values?
Sure, you could do that. You, you can terminate a TIF district, assuming there's no project plan in place, et cetera. But sure. And then you could. And then you could, you could reestablish the TIF District if you could qualify the property. And that was the second question you asked, which is also a little bit of a problem with the statute. Once the district is qualified, let's say blight, if that blight goes away, it's still a qualified district. So we go all the way back to 2006 and the conditions that existed the day the district was created qualified the TIF District for now and forever. So.
And I'm, I'm going to hop in because if I am remembering correctly, this district was created on, if you remember back to Pete's list, this district was created on the basis of the majority of it being in a floodplain.
Right.
So blight was, blight was not the criteria that was used to establish this Rock Creek TIF District.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And the improvements to Rock Creek, of course, have brought most of the property out of the floodplain now, so.
Right.
It would, it would no longer qualify for TIF.
So is there a reason, and this might be way off base and maybe we could return to it later, but is there a reason to create these TIF projects, you know, decades in advance, rather than waiting for a project to come along?
You know, it all depends on the property. Because it isn't easy to qualify property for, for a TIF District. And cities often feel like now's the time to do it before that qualification factor like blight or the floodplain goes away. So they sort of create TIF districts and land bank the property.
Hmm, okay.
I should point out, though, that with the Mission Bowl site, the current value of those parcels is actually lower than it was in 2006. And actually, Johnson County just dropped the value significantly for next year as well. So actually, the development, when it gets built, will have to first dig its way out of, it's not a huge hole, but it's going to have to dig its way out of that hole first before it creates increment. And so you can actually think about this development partially, the, the taxes that will go to the city and the other taxing jurisdictions is just part of that base distribution that Pete's graph showed in the PowerPoint. Those are actually taxes that you're not currently getting because that value is, has dropped. So it's, it's not, Solly, you're absolutely right. There's often a situation where the value has increased. And you might think that the TIF is unfairly capturing increment that shouldn't, it shouldn't, but that's actually not, not true.
Not the case here. Okay, that's good to know.
And just a little bit of perhaps historical context. So if we go all the way back to sort of even pre-creation and establishment of this TIF District, FEMA went through a process of revising floodplain maps. So there was a point in time in which much of the property along this Rock Creek Channel was not in the 100-year floodplain. And the floodplain maps, I believe, were revised just a little bit before I arrived in the city of Mission, so 2002, 2003 timeframe. And it put about $51 million worth of commercial property in particular into that 100-year floodplain, which severely limited the opportunities or potentially limited the opportunities for development for property owners, both commercial and residential, because now they were limited to a certain percentage of reinvestment in the, for redevelopment of those properties. So overall, I think that the, the goal and the thought process in creating such a large TIF District was it, in many ways of reaction and in response to the revision of those floodplain maps and looking ahead to say, we want to be able to have the ability to assist in redevelopment of this, this corridor and, and a lot of commercial property potentially that has now been impacted by something that the city didn't, you know, didn't do and the property owners didn't do. And then at the same time, so for example, the entire Gateway site was in the 100-year floodplain.
Right.
So in 2005, we actually had a project. And until we made those stormwater improvements and started working through that process, we wouldn't, we weren't going to be in a position to issue a building permit to start that work. So, you know, 15 years later, you can look back and, you know, wonder, did we have the cart before the horse? But again, we were sitting at that point in time with the project that was actively being considered by the council that could not move forward without some of those other considerations in place. So there's some, I think, unique characteristics that, you know, all these years later is difficult to remember in this district.
Yeah, no, and that makes sense. I still think it's a weird piece of the statute, but I guess that's something more to address with our state reps, but.
And, and Solly, if I could add one more thing, I've seen cities with older TIF districts recognize that the increment is too large because the value is so low. And that's where we get into the redevelopment agreement and say, you can't have all the, you can only have 50%. So we can adjust on the backend to make up for that discrepancy that is created when you have a very, very old district.
That makes sense, too. Thanks.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, yes, Hillary.
Um, okay, and I apologize if I'm missing something. This language is very dense. But I, I understand that the TIF will generate about $7.4 million and reimburse, reimbursable costs are at about $5.5 million. And so what happens to the other, you know, that 1.9 million? Does that just come back to the city unless we designate it as something ourselves?
Yes. I'm sorry. The answer is yes. What we are going to do is we are going to apply a portion of that surplus increment to project costs the city has already incurred on Rock Creek. Bruce is working on that side of it. But we will actually get reimbursed for some of our Rock Creek improvements through the use of that TIF.
All right, anybody else have a question?
I have another question.
Yeah, Ken.
I'm probably getting into the details too much at this point, but this property was sold to the developer. And the price that they paid for the land should have included some element of what the land features were in the cost that they paid for the land. My question is, is then the city being asked to do, include in eligible costs, those elements that perhaps should have been discounted as part of the sale of the property? For instance, the knowledge that you had to perhaps move the gas lines. Was that something that, or, or the, the lines, the, the, the lines for the sewer, the, the water waste lines and so on? Is that something that should have actually been discounted as part of the sale of the property? And they're going to be asking for eligible costs on that?
So, Cosmo or Davis, I, I think, if I can jump in, there's a couple of ways of looking at that. There's, there's whether or not it's a TIF eligible cost. And, and the city always gets to decide which costs, if any, it is willing to have TIF go towards reimbursing. So you get to call the shots on whether to include certain costs in the, in the, you know, in the makeup of the, of the, of the cost that can be reimbursed with TIF. But the bigger thing that I look at in, in analyzing the performas and the development budgets is, you know, is the acquisition cost and all the other costs relating to site preparation? Are those costs appropriate and reasonable for a development of this type as we compare it to other similar projects? And for what it's worth, and you'll hear more about this when I, I present more of my analysis, when you look at the, the development or the acquisition and, and site preparation costs, both in dollar terms in total, but also on a per-unit basis, we are not seeing those costs be, look unreasonable. In fact, they're probably on the low end of the spectrum of what we're, we, we see both in the Kansas City market and in other places. So that doesn't mean you can't say, look, we have a philosophical or a policy opposition to including XYZ as TIF eligible costs for reimbursement. But I would argue that the bigger question is, does the fact that those costs weren't included in the acquisition cost, does that somehow blow the budget, right? And, and make it look like there's more need for TIF? And I would say the key, my analysis so far at least is that that's not the case.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? All right, any closing comments, Laura?
I would just say again, this will, the project plan will go to the Planning Commission at their meeting next Monday evening for, and they will, they will not be looking and evaluating the financials of the plan. They will be looking simply to find the plan in conformance with the city's comprehensive land use plan. And as we talked about before, that is kind of the, the first step that has to happen before you can all start to formally consider and discuss and call public hearings on the rest of this process. I would just touch sort of briefly, well, a couple of things. Oftentimes, when the TIF project plan is introduced for the first time, it can be somewhat confusing from a public perspective because there's a sense that that is the deal that has been negotiated, right? And we want to just be very clear and help support you in being able to communicate with the community and your constituents that this is not the deal. This is a very high-level overview of what is intended for the site. And that deal and all of these points to be negotiated will be happening in the weeks and months to come. And so again, going back to Pete's presentation, that development agreement is actually the point in time, you know, at which you would agree to all of the negotiations. So I think a couple of key things to remember through that process because there is, it does take a two-thirds majority of the council to approve a TIF project plan. So you can, you can be comfortable, you can approve a TIF project plan and still vote in a different direction if you don't end up with all of the deal points in a development agreement, right? So that they do not have to, those, those votes and those considerations don't necessarily have to mirror one another. So again, we'll, we'll be really clear as we move through the balance of this process. But just kind of the high-level recap of next steps will be, Planning Commission will see this next Monday. Then we will have that special city council meeting ahead of our committee meetings on November 4th to adopt the resolutions or consider the resolutions, which we'll call the, excuse me, call the public hearing on the TIF project plan and the, the creation of the TIF District 3A. Also, at that November 4th meeting is going to be sort of our first deeper dive into Bruce's analysis and many of the things that he's been talking with the developers about. And then we will have November, December to work through all of that. So the public hearing, public hearings on all of these things would be set for your December 16th city council meeting. It's our, it's our hope that we would be able to move through the process and wrap this up by the end of this calendar year. But I think as Councilmember Flora asked, at the last time we were discussing, if we aren't there, you know, there's, we still have a window of time and under the statutes to continue to consider that after the first of the year.
Laura, could I, I just had one last point, and this goes back to Councilmember Flora's question. I did want to just also note that although we're talking about TIF here, the analysis that we're doing also contemplates other proposed incentives, such as the proposed IRB sales tax exemption. So I wanted to assure you that, you know, even though the, the TIF is sort of the big ask and the, the major focus of, of our, our analysis and this process, we do make sure we contemplate other forms of city participation as well so that, you know, whatever you end up deciding to agree to on the TIF front is, is part of a, the overall comprehensive poll.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right. Ken?
I just wanted to say thank you very much. This has been very helpful.
All right.
I have one, one more quick one. I, I just, at some point in time, as we're looking at all the TIF criteria and various ways of doing business with financing vehicles, will we ever get to a point where we'll look at affordable housing and that fitting into the concept of how the city supports businesses?
Yes, that is going to be one of the considerations as we go forward.
Good, thanks.
Well, it is, let me make sure we're clear on that so that, I mean, what our takeaway with, from, from the conversations that we've had on this project up to this point is the council is most interested in considering or potentially considering the use of incentives if the project were to incorporate an affordable housing component. So that is the position that, that Bruce has been working from and negotiating from.
And I think also green building components have been raised multiple times, you know, yeah.
Right, sustain, right. Some of the sustainability aspects and green building components. So Councilmember King, when you say how that relates to our businesses, is there something more that you're looking for in that analysis or consideration? I just want to be clear as we, as we bring additional information forward to you in the next several weeks.
You defined exactly what I was looking for.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, hearing no further questions or comments. We will adjourn the work session. We will reconvene at 7 o'clock, same, same locale?
Same locale, different Zoom, separate Zoom invite. So if you're wanting, you're going to need to log off and participate and, and re-enter through the other Zoom link, please.
All right, see you at 7:00.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Thanks, Bruce.